Part of me in order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. All right, any motion to adopt a seating agenda? Play what?
Second.
Jason.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
I'll jump to the gun and pledge allegiance. Anyway, any motion to approve the minutes from the prior meeting?
Some.
Jason.
Second. Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Okay. Moving on to section four point one, the personnel consent agenda, any motion?
Some.
Jason.
Second.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Okay.
I have a, sorry to interrupt here. I have a comment slash, well, uh, while we're on the topic, just noticing that another teacher has left. Um, in the past, I've brought up exit interviews and I just think that this is a good time to bring that up as well again. Um, that I think an exit interview for staff that are leaving is a good idea.
We're doing that now.
So that's happening with this in person? Oh, okay. Oh, sorry, I was not informed. Who's, uh, who is involved in the interview on our, where we go in?
I agree with you there.
Only you?
Uh, yeah, so far, or Mr. Farrell.
I think that someone else should be added, in my opinion. Just like HR or, I don't know, board member, or I just think to keep it, um, you know, um, objective.
Okay.
To add that suggestion.
We had, uh, Bob, you're involved with HR, so that, that covers that piece. And my former employment as an HR director, I did the exit interviews and passed the information on the superintendent, but it was a much larger district than, than where we go, so. But we started those exit interviews back when the board had suggested that's something we should be doing, uh, in addition to our culture survey that we had, and we want feedback, and that's why we're doing that.
Okay.
Section five, uh, five point one, the budget transfer, any motion?
Some move.
I know.
Second.
Mike.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Joe.
Hi.
Section five point two, the treasurer, the monthly treasurer's report, any motion?
Some.
Jessica.
Second.
Jason.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Section five point three, the health and welfare contract with bigger than city schools, any motion?
Some move.
Sorry, go ahead.
Some.
That was Jason.
I'll second.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
And finally, uh, in five point four, the gene therapies contract, any motion?
Some.
Mike.
Second.
Jason.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Moving on to section six, six point one, the CPSECS in five oh four, any motion?
Some move.
Jason. Do you have any else wanting to back it?
I'm fine right here. You're doing all right. Jason can.
No, blackouts are, uh, that one is not bad. Sorry.
I have a motion.
Jason.
I'll second.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Okay, then we have a lot going on today. Uh, you have, uh, something, I know Linda does too, uh, spent the last two Wednesdays at the BOSI's. Uh, two weeks ago, they had the annual meeting, um, said that the BOSI, uh, they were, were here, who are tonight. Um, they ignore most significant thing, and there was a capital project. Yeah, BOSI has a lot of infrastructure items. I can't remember all that. I can't hear myself, Joe, it's like, anyway. I don't think it's done. All right, can you hear me now? Anyway, um, the, at the annual meeting, the, uh, the superintendent, the BOSI superintendent presented the administrative budget. And as I said, uh, it was, uh, pretty much the same thing that she presented when they came out here and talked about their capital project. They have a lot of infrastructure, we have enough things to go back to the seventies, hadn't been replaced in a Leslie Distin building. So, they actually have things that you can't get parts for anymore, so that's pretty much, uh, the significance of the increase in the budget. Uh, they also, it was really nice, they had a, uh, a party for John Crosby, and you know, Christine from where we go. John's been on the board for about twenty years at BOSI's. And, uh, the bell choir played a couple of requests that John had, it was very nice. And then they made a cake, it was, it was, it was nice. I'm glad that I got there. And then this past Wednesday, Linda and I went up for the presidents and vice presidents meeting, and, uh, I thought the most interesting part there was Christine Wendell, what, what, Wendell, is that a person?
Yeah.
In the professional development school. I think what was most interesting is her, you know, her experience with the point, but also how they're, they're trying, and she put grow their own. I think that was a terminology that, that she used as far as our new teachers go. And, uh, I thought that she was very good, seemed like a really good plan.
And she's the manager, or the one who organizes the administrators for teachers, student teachers, field assignments, and, uh, they have a wonderful outreach program where they're, they are trying to grow their own within their own district, but also they share what other districts are doing. And if the board would like more information, she sent us a slide show that we can pass on to, it's very short, but it highlights the program that she manages, she works for Portland, that's what she does, and, um, uh, it's, it's quite a program to help bring more folks into the business of teaching. And, uh, the field experiences are wonderful, and they aren't compensated for doing field experiences as well as those teachers that take on those assignments for the particular cohort that, uh, they are given. And so it's a wonderful program, and they're trying to expand it. Um, and the second thing that, that came on in our meeting last week is they're sending, uh, New York City has the NISBA convention this fall. And, uh, so if there's enough interest, they're gonna get a bus for all of us so that we don't have to drive our own vehicles to the convention. The convention, I believe, is October twentieth and twenty first, which is a mu- uh, Sunday, Monday, versus the past, it's been a Friday, Saturday. So, uh, if you're interested, we're supposed to let, uh, our school boards association know as soon as possible because they wanna know how, how big the bus is from this area, and this is for the very, we would be going up with other board members from around the county here and in Broom County as well. Um, and they just need an interest, uh, so let us know by the first of June if you can. Uh, think about it, I'll give you more specifics, I'll send you an email, and then we'll pass that information on to, um, the representative, Mark. Also, um, there's a leadership conference, again, this will be their third annual leadership conference, which I went to last year, and it's, it's not just meant for vice presidents and presidents. And again, because we have our reorganization in July, this is perfect timing. I've reserved a spot, uh, for, uh, any of us to go, and if you have an interest in going, we'll let Marcy know, but that is July nineteenth and twentieth at the Desmond in Albany. So it's a leadership conference, it's very good, and I think you did get an email from our executive director for IS, for NISBA, but I will make sure that that professional development is passed on to you, and then let Marcy know as soon as possible because spots fill up really fast in, uh, the leadership conferences, and it's a great way to network and talk about some of the current, uh, items that are going on in the state with our school boards, and folks, and kids, and teachers, et cetera. It's, I went last year and it was amazing. Uh, so those, that's all I have.
All I have too.
Uh, just a couple of things, so we had, um, we had a visitor, two visitors, who belongs from the University of Ambersonson, who is a professor in the mathematics department, and also does a lot of research on STEM, STEAM programs. So, we've been working with her for, for several years now, and, uh, she brought a gentleman from Christ University from India who runs their school to see our STEAM program. So we were able to take him through high school and, and the different areas with the robotics and the, the other engineering pieces that are taking place. We are gonna continue to work with them, potentially have maybe some type of collaborative agreement between the school in India and our school here. Um, so we're pretty excited for that, there's some opportunity, I think, for, uh, some publishing to take place. She does a lot of research and, um, is interested in partnering on some publishing for our school district and our, and our STEM program, which is, which is really good news, um, you know, to be able to partner with the university and obviously a school from another country as well, so. Um, that was a great visit, and, you know, we look forward to further collaboration with that. Um, in terms of events, you know, as you see, driving around campus every night, there's something going on at every point in time on this campus. We've got games out there tonight, the sun's shining, which is nice, doesn't happen all the time, so we're, we're, we're happy for that. Uh, May and June are really busy months, um, on, on the school campus. Um, obviously, we've got our, our budget votes coming up, but we have several concerts, um, at the, at the middle school, high school, and also at the elementary schools, there're end of the year events that take place as well, so. It's a busy, busy time of year, there'll be, uh, several, uh, several things going on in the evening, so feel free to stop by and check them off. Okay, so we had Mr. Doctor, excuse me, Dr. Farrell tonight, who will give our final, uh, presentation on budget. Not a huge, uh, change based on the last time that we've met, but there are some updates, obviously, with the governor completing, uh, budget with the legislators at the state level, it, uh, clearly took a little longer than, than normal or expected. Uh, but, uh, you know, we feel pretty good about where we're at here, with every budget, with some of the adjustments we've been able to make over the past couple of weeks.
So you can go right down to, uh, go there.
Here, go back.
You've been through the same parts here. Um, the board has asked that, uh, we try to balance the budget without the use of reserves. Um, we were able to accomplish that. The thirty thousand dollars that you're seeing there, um, for the reserve fund balance is from the workers' compensation reserve. Basically, that is for paying tail claims from year to year. So, we're, we're using that thirty thousand dollars to pay those claims, which is very common for that reserve. The reason why you establish the reserve is to pay those. Um, we've had a couple of cases that have come up, and their, their tail claims are, are rolling out into July, August, September. So, if you don't put the money available there from the reserve in the budget, you can't necessarily use it, that's why we're pushing it, uh, here. Um, the offset expense is on the other side, so it really isn't any particular revenue that's offsetting the budget, that's, or, you know, making the budget not balanced, so that's why you see that there. Uh, the levy is at one nine nine, and, um, with state aid now going up, uh, a little bit, it didn't go up a terrible, you know, a, a large amount, certainly not in this state legislature, didn't push it all the way to four point one, which is originally what, uh, the, the governor, from the governor's closing the legislature, went to about two point eight percent, as far, as far as the inflation number goes. For us, it ends up being around half a percent in state aid, um, little like, almost about a hundred thousand dollars, not a lot of money, um, in terms of state aid increases, but it did help close the gap a little bit. Um, as far as the rest of the gap, we were able to close, uh, a couple different ways. One, um, we are reorganizing administratively, which is creating some savings because there are retirements on the administrative side. Um, we're also gonna reduce the tuition side, um, for out of district placements. That's a number is somewhat of a moving target. It could be a hundred fifty thousand, it could be fifty thousand. So, uh, we're gonna go right about the middle of that line, and we reduce that line about fifty thousand dollars. It's a safe number to go in. Um, by doing that reduction, it doesn't really affect, it's not something that affects the budget terribly much. It's, it doesn't reduce a program or anything like that, it's just a matter of what happens when a kid needs to be specifically placed for a specific reason out of district, and that has to do with special education. Um, the other thing is, is that we're looking, uh, through the, the maintenance side of the budget, in the BCS, the building condition survey was actually in the budget. So, we're taking that out, and we're gonna throw it right into the capital project, which shouldn't be a big problem, so that can reduce the budget down to another fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and between all of those things, we're able to get to a balance of where, what you see right here. So it's a fifty seven, eight seventy nine, two seventy two budget, in terms of revenue and expenses, uh, a little change to state aid, and a one nine nine tax levy. This is just, again, showing you the same thing, um, just in a broken down, like, between year to year. On the expenditure side, uh, you can see the salaries, uh, on the instructional side are actually pretty flat, um, which is a good thing. That's what you wanna see. Um, the other thing is, is that the benefit side, we're on a flat. Uh, the biggest chart of increase that you see this year is BOSI's, which is related to the CTE enrollment, which we talked about in the fall. Uh, this is your estimated revenues, um, this has basically our state aid built inside of it. Uh, these are the break down for each year. This is your miscellaneous revenues, no change here from last time, exactly the same from the first two drafts. Go ahead.
You had mentioned outgoing tuition replacements. What do we charge for?
At our in-house, uh, we take students from other districts and some of our in-house special needs programs, great one months, full one months, and that tuition's, uh, much higher.
All right, next one. Uh, this is just for property tax reserves and understanding that property tax levy is at one nine nine, they're going up about three fifty eight, eight thousand. Same as last time, uh, again, this budget, uh, property tax, the proposed increases in property tax levy are below the allowable tax gap. So, the board was allowed to go to five point, it actually did slightly change to five point oh nine instead of five, five point one six. Um, you could have gone to that, the board has elected in this particular budget, if so, to adopt it, to one nine nine, which is significantly less than what the cap is allowed. Uh, just a reminder that this district does not rely on federal money anymore, we didn't last year. We, uh, we, we got off of that, uh, revenue chain from the federal government as soon as we could, which is a, a good move. You wanna do that because you wanna stabilize your budget, not relying on outside sources. You wanna stay on state aid, property taxes, keep your budget consistent that way. Um, and state aid again is a minimal increase at one point six six.
Uh, did, uh, a lot of districts do the same thing in the valley?
Actually, some did, some didn't, some are still, even if you're looking at the ARC, the final piece of federal legislation in dollars, you'd have all the way to, uh, twenty five if you wanted to, but this September is typically where people are wrapping up. You have, depending on, between CARES, Curs and ARC, there were different deadlines for each one of those, those acts.
Let me just real quick, we'll, we'll go back to the formula piece in the foundation aid, the governor had, you, you know, there had been a lot of push around the four point one percent, which is really the, the number that's used by the formula that's in law for foundation aid.
Right.
However, that didn't happen, again, and we know this happened, obviously, in years past with not completely following that foundation aid formula. However, uh, it's at two point eight. I think one of the things to really keep in mind, and the governor's continuously publicly said this over and over, that there's gonna be a thorough review of, of the foundation aid formula and process that they use. Uh, her making the statement that districts, um, across the state are roughly ten percent down in enrollment. Um, so she's, she's clearly, um, has an agenda to make sure that she's looking closely at, uh, those formulas. So, another reason why I think that, um, smart.
You know, when it's a lot, I mean, at the president's vice presidency, one thing that came up, which was, I thought really an excellent point is, even though enrollments are going down, the, the cost of educating kids is going up. You know, we have a lot of special needs, we have much more autism, things like that than we had in the past. So, even though population is lower, the costs continue to rise and perhaps even higher than if we hadn't lost the power.
There's definitely that argument that, you, you know, schools are taking down more and more, um, you know, as the years go on, and, you know, between, uh, social workers and school healthers and mental health concerns, and things of that nature, that there's, um, you know, the full gamut of, um, services, you know, that, you know, we try to offer as much as we can for our students in the community, and, um, you know, I think it's, it's, looks different than it probably did ten years ago, for sure, so.
A rural school sensation, just, um, some, uh, skating ladder to all of us, and there's, there's actually at the very end of it, you can send your input to Albany, and one of the things that was in that letter, or to, to all of us, was that, um, she is, she is just not doing what she used to be doing for schools, our legislators are advocating for these changes in a positive way for us because, like, two point eight versus four point, for the foundation aid, and that's not just the only thing.
Yep.
But the inflation factor, and I mean, you know, we're considered a rural school, and one of the aspects, if I am elected onto the BOSI's school, uh, board trustees, that's where I will be really pushing for that because we need as much financial support as we possibly can. Uh, I was pleased to see that they, again, validated our legislators in Tyler County and at Broom County, um, that they worked their tails off to try and get this budget, so it would be, benefit the schools, our financial status, et cetera. But, um, very disappointed in what the governor did. She pulled the rug right out from under a lot of school districts that are in categories like this.
Yeah, I think that there'll be, obviously, there'll be good representation from each of the advocacy groups, um, you know, when they're taking a look at this formula, individuals like the veteran along the path, McPop Lowery, um, you know, who's been doing this work a long time, advocating around, uh, the need for, you know, fully funded foundation aid, so.
The, the other thing at our meeting last week is that nine months is not enough time, six to nine months is not enough time to analyze this formula that they've given to the Rockefeller Center to do, and that was another thing, a handpicked group. And, um, it's just very frustrating to me to see the dynamics of the politics that is going on, because it's hurting, it's hurting schools, it's hurting kids. Because it's hurting, it's hurting schools, it's hurting kids, so, and programs. But thank you all for what you do and what you all do and what you all do for our county legislators. Because they are working hard to support us.
No, you're right. I, I do think that, as far as us, a school district our size, we're, we're in pretty good shape. I do think that some decent decisions have been made over time that is going to put us.
So, I could, no.
Wrong presentation. Don't want to go over that slide.
I couldn't do my screen at work, I'm like, what the hell?
I think it's important right now, which, I think, for three years, our foundation aid has grown to thirty-six percent.
It has.
Which has allowed us to do some of these things. And I think going forward, we need to be very critical in every position that comes to mind.
That, that, that's.
I think we got a lifeline set to us.
Right. But that, that, to your point on that, that every position that does come up will need to be looked at because I think in this, what she's saying is, you've been warned. That's what, I think that's what the governor's saying in some way, in a very summarized way, that the state is telling us that moving forward, and you're right, we're going to need to make sure foundation aid is fully funded, but we're going to have to prepare for budgets that are going to be a lot like this, I think.
She needs to be warned because I looked at the data from the rural schools in our county and I compared it to the rural tubs.
Rural schools getting harmed.
They did.
They did.
And, and I looked at Broom Counties as well. And I'm sort of, it's not apples to apples. There's a lot of unfairness going on and it's just not fair to us.
And it's, the safe harmless is a big one. That's, that's the one that I think, I think that the inflation factor, I think, is going to work itself out already. It's my prediction. I think the safe harmless is the one that, if you're asking me, I think they're going to try to go after. It's really much more smaller districts. It's just my prediction and watching this over time, I think that's how it's going to go, but.
If they change that, some of the smaller districts that are already in trouble, that could just.
That's exactly right.
You're talking about very starting to merge schools.
That's correct.
Yeah, there's, well, even that'll take you a couple of years.
Exactly right.
There's a fair amount of studies with some of the really small schools out there that are going on right now.
Yeah.
Those that are probably less than seven hundred students, seven hundred and fifty students, are considering moving to K, K eight and then tuitioning their high school kids out to nearby, nearby high school, school districts.
And so, the, the fact that we're giving our kids, as well as other kids in Tyler County, an opportunity to come here to do some courses is wonderful. I mean, that's very positive for all of us.
That's, that's, that's exactly the pieces that I think are in place, that are going to help us through that, whatever comes our way. My sense of it is, is I think we'll position decently.
Based on the data, yes, yes.
Right, so. Go two slides. Another way, keep going. This is enrollment projections, which is what the governor's basically talking about. This is the, this is since two thousand eleven. You can see that while it has now started to, yeah, level off, the reduction has gone downward, down about, in that ten, twelve, thirteen year timeframe, about two hundred, two hundred and fifty kids. So, that's well over ten percent, which is exactly what she's talking about. Keep going to the next slide, this is enrollment over time. Kindergarten, kindergarten seems to be getting much more of a moving target than it's ever been. So, we'll see where we go next year in terms of registrations. But you can see the difference between Apple Lakewood and OES. You've got about three hundred ninety kids in one building and four hundred ninety-six to five hundred in another. So, those are pretty big differences between the two. And the high school is still ranging in that mid-six hundred range. You get weird scenarios where you get big classes that come through and then small classes that come through. It, it just goes in waves. Why it happens, who knows? So, that's our enrollment projections, you can keep going. This is the tax cap levy calculation and this is just, again, educational purpose is just informational. We've gone through the formula. The important factor here, and I think Linda's touching on it, is the idea that that allowable growth factor in the second, in the middle there is two percent, but the CPI itself is more like four point six. So, while inflation is high, you don't necessarily have that factor to your favor in the middle of the formula. It cannot go above two percent in the middle of the formula. If they use the true CPI and get it in the middle, there wouldn't make much difference. This is our property taxes over time, historically. And in general, you can see that boards have, over the last, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen years, we've kept our tax levy pretty low. We have one exception there in the fifteen, sixteen timeframe. But in general, it's been anywhere between zero and two percent. So, this is, this year would be no exception to that rule, it's one nine-nine.
I remember I heard that you got all the next year's BOSI.
It was, yes, it was. Which basically was the shift of state aid. They basically, local taxpayers fund the bills of the state, which is, you know, which taxpayer pays for it.
And because we experienced that, that's why we tried to use up our, other than some of the other reserves.
That's exactly right. You want to get through that and not rely on it and your kids build up the adequate reserves that you need when the time comes. All right, next slide. This is just again, a review of this slide, just to say what we are doing, including the budget, smaller class size CTE programs, continue with our rest program, which we have done. We've got a pretty good program coming up again, again this summer. You'll see information on that coming out soon. And of course, continuing our career pathways and service learning opportunities with collabs and touch cards, college credits and such. All of that, of course, stays in the budget. And here's our budget timeline. We're at the point now where this is the final budget approval for the board. We'll have hearings here, one's an information session, and we can always do it at Apple Lakewood. And then the official one will be here on May thirteenth with the vote out of the twenty-first. Any questions?
Just a couple of things of, like, what's included in the budget. I mean, I can see the big roll-up number, I can read that, but it's hard to, I don't know what's included in all of those. So, like, under, like, I don't know what athletics falls under. Or, like, specifically to athletics, is the mentor, the athletics mentor position in this budget?
Athletics mentor position?
Yeah, the, um, Al Bernetti's role.
Al Bernetti's role?
Yeah.
It's in there.
It's in here. All right, and then, I was pleasantly surprised the other night when you mentioned driver sub being, you know, possibly this summer. So, is that included in this budget already?
Yes.
Oh, that's exciting, okay.
The question will be whether we pull it together.
Right. Car and.
That's a matter of getting the program together.
But the money, we can, like, pedal the metal. Okay.
That's a way to put it.
I think you're the person.
With the extra break.
Well, you got the second break.
Yeah. So, and then, this is just a comment or a question. I don't know if moving forward, like, future years, I realize that to see everything that's in the budget is, you know, a seventy-five page document that is not probably appropriate for a, a board meeting. But I mean, is it ever available for us to look these things up?
Sure.
I mean, I'm.
You can.
Yeah.
You can right now?
You could look at it if you want, I can give, I can.
Oh, I just, well, I know, I mean, I'm taking this year as a learning year, you know, so I kind of assumed we would have a, a session where we all sat down and looked at that, which we did do.
So, the way that typically works is you do a bunch of workshop. And the board has supplied a large binder or you can get a digital binder digitally, you can throw it that way, it's your preference. And you go through it. We've been through those before, right? And if you want to do that, the future is not a problem.
Line by line.
No, line by line.
I mean, I know it takes forever, but I'm a curious person and.
Sure.
I'd love to do that.
Sure.
So.
And so, it's exciting.
I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, there's a hard copy binder available over here at Budget Ten. Yep.
And it's a public website online, makes your board score, spread your board.
I just thought it'd be brought to my attention as, you know.
Part of it.
But, moving forward.
Just to tie in, I think we've covered the fact that we really didn't get into discussing the budget until December. Move this forward, I think. And moving forward for next year, I think we'd be, just a reminder that over the summer, July, until this turn of the year's budget, get some stakeholders together. Because I really don't think we talked about it until December, I feel a bit prepared as a, as a board to get a look at this, this particular budget, so. And to the point of educating, I agree, Linda, that, but if you look at, there's a finite amount of tax dollars in your state. If you look across the state and you see how much you're spending on certain initiatives, you know, it isn't a surprise to me that we're running out of money. So, anytime when something comes up, a building project, a position, I, I do think we need to, in the future, be at a bare minimum as frugal as we can.
I don't think, I guess I, I have to disagree. I don't think we're running out of money. I think we are doing the best we can, trying to maintain the programs that we have. So, I guess if you're referring to what the state's going to give us, that's a whole different story.
That's what I'm talking.
That's what he's talking.
Then, then, then I follow you. But we, I just think we need to continue to advocate with our legislators and get them to pound the pavement. Because I'm not sure what she's doing at the state level, as the governor is, like, paying for our kids across the state. Maybe for certain counties and certain areas, but not for our rural areas at all. To feel like we're getting the short end of the stick.
This isn't anything new either, right? I think just about every governor, one way or another, is, is trying to make adjustments.
We've seen this.
They equate Cuomo's, Cuomo's actions when he was in office to what she's doing. So, it, it was, it was a little eye-opening because it was pretty skating on what the governors, both governors have done in regards to rural schools. And I can't say the same thing for Urban because we're, I've been the home with this for eight years. So, I see a huge discrepancy between them. And I know that the Urban schools have fought very hard to get the funding that they need to educate their kids and keep the taxes as low as possible for the folks in the, in the community. But like I said, I'm very disappointed in the, in the governor's final proposal for us, even though we are better off than the board before.
I, I think, I think to kind of nutshell, to give the context where we talked about electric buses and that, that's a future conversation. But, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. And that's her mandate, that's not our mandate.
Really interesting, because if you look at California's, it's just drastically different. Similar states in terms of financing, but that one is actually somewhat reasonable in terms of timeframe. Yours is, it's going to be totally left.
That's the other thing that we talk about in this, but as a, as a large school board body, we talk about what's going on in other states. And the contrast is amazing, what's going on here.
It really, really is. It's very, very different. The one that they're doing out there is actually give some time, it's thought out, they're infrastructure-wise.
We've done so many wonderful things in the eight years I've been on the board and I can't speak to what was going on prior because I was very immersed in my former job. But I, I know even as a teacher here, I always felt like we were getting the support that we needed. But it's a little discouraging right now, sorry. I don't mean to sound like that, you know, I just want you to know we're fighting very hard for our kids and our staff, which is, uh.
I think there's been, you know, there's been a big push for shared services. There's been, you know, a push on rural schools for consolidation, merger. But, you know, they don't seem to happen as quickly as you would think they would happen. You might be seeing some of the smaller districts, some of the athletic teams start to merge and a few positions here and there, but not at the level of, of what I think is expected from particular people at the top.
And we've made some financial decisions for this, for the district that have been extremely constant for us, like gaining out of the consortium for the health plan that has saved the district a lot of money. And that money's being used for, it's not even a fucker, it's all my soul.
Just for clarification regarding slide ten, so there's three teaching positions through retirement that we're not facing?
That's, that's correct.
Are all other positions still in the budget?
All other positions are still in the budget, correct. That's correct.
Any other questions?
If by chance someone decides to either retire or leave for whatever reason, then your plan is to replace them at, at this point in time.
Yeah, just to be honest.
That gets evaluated, that happens, you know, they might, they might, we might say no.
Yeah.
And that's okay because, just because it's in there doesn't mean it, you know, regardless. You don't know how it's going to shake out as you go the year and when people hurt or not.
Understood.
There will be people who will decide to retire, just like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I do think though, we made a lot of comments about as things pop up, with, you know, not just replacing, taking a hard look. I mean, if you read, you read her comments and who knows where this thing will go with, with, you know, the study with the Rockefeller Group. And I would assume that, you know, there'll be some changes. Hopefully, hopefully it will be, you know, it'll be okay.
Is there, there's no, is any financial, the, 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 if that's?
I don't think so, no. Actually, I, you know, I think, I personally think it will be less, you know, hopefully there'll be less testing that's going on and more opportunity for project-based learning and flexibility in that as well. Okay, Elsa? Thank you, Dr. Farrell. I want to thank Dr. Farrell, obviously, and all those that participated, obviously, you know, putting a budget together. There's a, it's always a heavy lift and it goes on non-stop. You know, to your, to your point, and I wish there's stuff all down in July and August and September, October and, you know, there's constant, constant things that are always moving parts, so it's important to just engage for sure. So, thank you, Dr. Farrell, for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to this section, nine district business. As far as the rest of the source, we have nine point one. So, we need more things to, to board to adopt the budget.
Someone.
Mike.
Stucker.
Jason.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe. I'm inserted, fifty-seven, eight seventy-nine, two seventy-two. That's about it.
I have a nine point two, this is for the buses. Five buses. Need a motion?
Someone.
Right?
Second.
Linda.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Um.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
These are, these are buses, right?
Jason, this, this is.
All things are kidding, all these.
Otherwise, it'd just be one bus, Joe. I have nine point three, this is the property tax report. Any more?
Someone.
Second.
Jessica, go on, Jason.
Is it Joe or Jason?
It's me.
Oh, it's Jason, sorry.
Sorry.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Okay. Nine point four, this is the resolution for the BOSI's, by request of services.
Someone.
Linda.
Second.
Jessica.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And finally, nine point five, this is approved of the BOSI's budget as well as the two board member amenities. Dave Holling, I agree. Need a motion?
Someone.
Jason.
Second.
Jessica.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Um.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Wasn't that the last one, sorry. You got it. A secret resolution for Knopf Street, we need a moment, we need a motion.
Someone.
Jessica.
Second.
Linda.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Joe.
Hi.
And finally, nine point seven, this is, uh, another, so, Knopf Street, thirty-six Knopf Street. Need a motion?
Someone.
Jason.
Second.
Linda.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike. Joe.
Hi.
Okay. Yeah. We'll be moving on, uh, parts of me, put up your clock, please.
Sure, Ken.
Let's see, uh, we have one question left seat. Mr. McNe, you have two minutes.
Uh, I'd just like to, uh, ask the board if they understand the needness that was used in the property tax cap formula this year. It's kind of a contradiction. You didn't tax the people enough last year, so we brought forward the ability to tax last year into this year. By my calculations, the five point one percentage you started out with, and make the case for the two, was, should have been four point two, uh, percent property tax cap without the reach back. Now, the thing that, it doesn't make any difference, it's almost ridiculous within the scheme of things, when five point one is dead on arrival, so is four point two. Now, what's gonna happen, what's reasonable expectation in the future, is that that reach back will be used every year, and no one will be told about it. It was not explained to you. Just an interesting note, I've never, I'm not, this is just the strangest thing I've ever seen, is in the, uh, sources of cash, we had a withdrawal from a reserve of thirty thousand dollars. This specific account was coming from, this specific thing was gonna be used. And that amount is like one hundredth of one percent of the budget, I think. Uh, I just don't understand why that even comes there, but there's reasons that stuff goes in. In the BOSI's presentation showed, and it keeps looking out every time, that we're gonna have a nineteen percent property tax increase due to the pilot change. Now, there's been, how would I phrase it, multi-year planning, in that the reserves are being built up for some reason.
Start writing out this in writing.
Uh, at, in that year, that we're gonna have that big nineteen percent, this, this change, this switcher rate of the taxes. Uh, why aren't we talking about that today? The moral obligation is to use budgeting, reserve savings, and so forth, for more than next year. June thirtieth, the books on this school district will close. Now, I'm just doubling the BOSI's estimate of under run. Which, I think it was one point five million for school year twenty-four. That's gonna make three million dollars of money that was never used in the twenty-four budget, yet we built the twenty-five budget, year budget on top of that. So, we've got, there's, there's a big fat under run of three million dollars. And we're gonna raise taxes to that, about three hundred and fifty-seven.
Let's see, Mike, you're gonna go.
Then, why do we have?
Double your time.
Uh, was there a board executive session to determine if we needed a law enforcement officer here?
Moving on, um, does anyone else have, uh? Okay. Well, then. Okay.
Yeah, Stacy.
Jason. Do you have anything you have to say?
Sure, um, all right, I'll jump first, just jump right in. We finished, um, our ELA state test last week, which was on computer, uh, computers, this computer is testing for the first time, our kids did awesome. Tech is great, families, features, everyone jumps on board, kids actually asked, I'm doing one tomorrow? No. Um, we had engineer David Latu Martin, we have seven town engineers, um, in our building. They spent the whole day, super cool, the kids, the kids built like robots that hold, it was almost like a little mini tractor hold. And the engineers talked to them about why, or why not their model was effective. Um, we have our store assembly coming up Thursday for respect, kids are very super excited. And our student council is raising money currently to help one of our families, we have a third grader who has leukemia. Um, and the kids, student council is doing a great job, they've made posters, there's a picture on it, and they're like educating each other. It's really cute to hear them talk, you know, there's a lot of like heartfelt, like, my grandma had cancer, so this is why this is important to me. And so, it's, it's nice to see them come together around one of our own, so.
Yes, that is.
Yeah.
Um, I, we, uh, have task force for ELA and MAP, and we're starting to work and really look at what we offer curricular wise at the elementary level right now. And, um, we just met as a MAP team, so it's, it's been really great to get them together and start kind of looking at what we're doing. And if there's, you know, where it shines, and where areas of focus that we wanna do, and, and that's kind of where we're at. I know they're working on, you know, end of the year stuff, so I'm trying not to do too, too much, but in the end, we still need to start looking at what we do. And, um, we think there's various improvement and changes in other programs that we can help our, all of our students here, so.
Have we, have we, uh, had registrations going out for summer enrichment at this point?
Yes.
Do we have an idea of what the, the count is so far up to this point?
That's not, the, the catalog's not, not out yet.
Okay.
It'll be out, usually comes out right around budget time, budget, like just before that. Um, we're gonna be doing it a little bit different this year. Um, I don't wanna steal their thunder, but here's all I'm gonna say, is that I've, I've read the Lilyfield, I listen to people waiting up at midnight. It's literally how it goes.
Yeah.
To register their kids. So, we're gonna do our best that doesn't have to happen. So, their kids are covered, and that's, should really, you know, put people at ease. Because when I started to hear about that over there, I'm like, what do you mean, you're sitting up at midnight waiting to register, like, you don't, we don't want that. So, we're gonna have a new format this year, um, Carrie Lucas is actually running that, and is doing a really nice job organizing. Um, she's probably one of the strongest organized people that I work with, and, uh.
She's got a public meeting, so.
Yeah, there's no question about that, but I'm not, you know, it's. But that's gonna go well, and we should get the numbers like we usually get.
Do you have an idea when our budget newsletters are gonna get out to our taxpayers?
It, it should go out before the first hearing. That's our, always our target, is to, we log in and then they sit.
That's one of the.
Right, we wanna be able to log in, be able to hand that to people, so that they can have it as an information source as we're talking to them.
Okay.
I'm glad to hear that thought, because I, I know actually there were parents that were pretty frantic over that.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, are you gonna include the, some of the capital project pieces too, like, like we did last time?
Yep, yeah, it'll be a whole part of that, yep.
Sorry, I already done your question.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Jessica.
Second.
Jason.